Call the meeting to order. Dr. Heim, would you like to loosen the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call roll please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Rice?
Here.
Ms. Klopbelter?
Here.
Ms. Nywark?
Here.
Ms. Edwards?
Here.
Okay, now, brand-new superintendent, first meeting, I'm turning the whole agenda over to you.
Okay, it is Mr. Heim, not doctor.
I know.
John's a doctor, but hey, you know, if people didn't work so hard for those, you would take them, the free ones, but some people have worked really hard for those, so I better be good, but thanks anyway.
I'll try to remember.
Special guest I would like to recognize, Dr. James, who is here for his first board meeting, number one of our new employees running our HR department, welcome to Lawton.
Yay!
So, moving on to number five, architect and construction manager at risk update. So do we start that with Cory?
Yeah, generally.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, I apologize for having to call in this time, I am still on my way back from a day in Lawton. So, I can't broadcast the report, but hopefully everyone got it ahead of time in their board packet, and then I'll just go down the list here, so, starting with Eisenhower, you know, we're continuing to track any risks associated with COVID and any potential delays there and work towards those. We've been working with Crossland to develop a detailed schedule for how we will complete this project and, you know, be done in time for teacher move-in on August 10th that week. We will be meeting with LPS to review that and answer any questions. And then we have submitted change order 12 for consideration as well. I do not have the list of those items in front of me, but are there any questions about any of those?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First off, you keep talking about our tracking our risk and stuff, when we hired Crossland as a, we hired it as a construction manager at risk, so we have a guaranteed maximum price, how come you keep telling us you're tracking the risk and cost?
It's a way of, you know, stating that we're trying to forecast anything that could be coming down the road and just keep track of that the best way we can.
Okay.
Not, I'm not trying to imply that the risk that the school is gonna take on. Some of these, you know, could be risk for Crossland. I'm just, I'm just trying to let you know that we are, we are well aware of the issue and we're definitely taking it seriously.
Okay, I guess I don't know that we had some risk issues except for one that we, is on the agenda tonight. Do we have others besides the interlocking walls?
Questions about the interlocking walls credit?
No, you said we had, you're tracking all the risk, what other risk are you talking about besides the interlocking walls that are not built to plan?
That are associated with the COVID?
No, okay, let's move on, on the interlocking walls that they didn't do, or I read that we had asked the contractor, we saw they weren't doing interlocking walls, we had them ask them to stop and to do it, they still didn't. What, are they not, are our walls not built to plan?
As far as the plan layout goes, they are where they're supposed to be, but we specified for the corner courses to be interlocked, so, you know, each row would intersect with the other and be interlocked. It's something that you paid extra for, it was in the specifications, and we kept telling them to do that, and, you know, when we, when we first noticed they weren't doing it was during the gym. And we said, okay, you know, we've got these walls up, these are our first ones, we don't want you to tear the gyms down, because we need to get steel going, but everything moving forward must be, and when we were next onsite and saw that it wasn't, we addressed the issue with the subcontractor and were told that they would be going back and fixing those, and then when we were onsite the next month and they still haven't, you know, changed course and they had a lot more block up, we just, we kept bringing this up and kept being told that they were gonna go back and they were gonna fix that, until they've got all the block up and it wasn't done.
Okay, go ahead.
So we've addressed that with the contractor and we've gotten the value for the labor difference that's required to do it with that method and made sure that it was returned back to the district.
Okay, well, their contract that we okayed way back in August the 18th, they're getting $3 million and they're wanting to give us back $25,000 on this. If this is what part of what they were supposed to do, I do not understand why we keep saying, why were we not, we were supposed to have somebody on site all the time. That was, that was one of the major things for hiring this construction management at risk, because they were watching their contractors and they were following along, making sure everything was built the way it was supposed to be built.
Right.
And what happened?
I'd probably have to defer to Crossland to answer that more directly. It's something that we continue to point out and, and we're told that it was gonna be resolved and until it was too late to force them to do it without, you know, tearing down a substantial part of the building.
Well Cory, if you remember way back when we had, we had an issue that we had two different construction companies wanna do the roofing and we had Ford come in and state that they could save us a substantial amount of money without losing any,
Right.
And you said then, and we were told then, that it was better to go with the architect's design, that you would go ahead and you would have a little bit of an issue with being responsible if we went with a different design and now we find out that we have interlocking walls that did get interlocked, that's not the plan. I don't understand.
Right, and we did everything within our power to get that resolved when it was in progress, and since it wasn't, and we feel like there is a cost savings that the contractor, you know, received by doing it this way, then we want that value returned to the owner. And the method that we've taken is to compare the hourly difference, you know, when they assign this work and they break it down, they have a unit cost between doing it this way versus doing it the other way. And so, you know, that cost difference multiplied by the hours on the job is how we arrived at this. And then we had the contractor present his pricing and he did it a different way, he just simply said, you know, it took me less hours to do it this way, but the prices lined up and so we felt like it was fair and equitable. And so that's, that's what we are presenting to you here. We wanna make sure that this, this value that you paid for originally and didn't get is being returned to the district.
So where did you return it, Cory?
It's the negative credit for negative 22,000.
So you lowered the Gmax?
No, it's being used in the contingency fund and being applied towards the other items in change order 12.
So we're not getting it back, because the Gmax is still the same, you're just gonna take it later on in the contingency?
At, at the end of the project, all remaining contingency will be returned in a final change order and it will lower the Gmax.
So what if the contingency is zero when we get done, did we just lose this 25,000 and not get interlocking walls? Or, sorry Carla?
No, you're fine, go ahead, I mean.
I think Chuck wants in.
If you, if you would prefer, we could do it a different way, we could have a change order that, that goes ahead and subtracts it from the guaranteed maximum price, if you'd like to do it that way.
We want, we want what we, what we approved, we want the plan with the interlocking walls. I just don't understand how, how we're not billed to spec now, when we were so hardcore on it a year ago.
Hey Cory, I think, you know, a big issue with this is, as you know, we've had some issues in the past with construction projects a long, long time ago where things did not go as planned and our community felt burned and betrayed by, you know, certain things not getting done right, like at Freedom, for example, and some other schools in the past, so, we just went into this process like understanding that we have to make sure that we're super transparent and that we truly deliver everything that we say, you know, because we're rebuilding trust with the community, so, it's a big deal for us, so, I mean, I'm, I'm wondering, I just have two quick questions, number one, I mean, can we, I'd like to know if we can get the interlocking walls and what that would look like at this point to deliver what we, right, like how far would that put us behind? And, and also number two, are we, can we be comfortable that moving forward, there is gonna be somebody on site every day looking for, at these things so that it doesn't go weeks or a month or whatever before something is caught?
Well, and those are all good points, but also, is it structurally sound? Are you gonna guarantee this 10 or 20 years down the road? Is it gonna hold up the way the interlocking walls were going to, and how's it tied together?
Well, potentially, there's a breach of contract on the part of multiple parties here.
Yes.
And I think we need to investigate this further before we do anything.
Okay.
Because I think, I think the subcontractors are culpable, the architects are culpable and, and potentially culpable, and, and Crossland's is potentially culpable, all three of them.
I agree.
Yeah. Well, definitely return and we'll look at those, but just to briefly respond to some of those questions, you know, structurally speaking, this method of construction is very typical nowadays and that's, that's why the subcontractor continues this way, that's, that's how most buildings are built. And the main difference you're gonna see is there's just a, a joint at the interior corners instead of seeing the block extend into the interlock, into the intersecting wall. They are still structurally tied together. It's just, it's a more time-consuming method, a lot of contractors don't, a lot of masons don't do this anymore.
But we paid for it, but that's what they, that's what they.
You paid for it, that's why we're tracking it, trying to be transparent, trying to make sure that you get everything you paid for and if for some reason you don't and there's not time to go back and revise it, that you get the money back for it.
That's not the way, that's not the way it works.
No, it's not the way it works.
I'm concerned that a subcontractor would just do what he wanted to do when he was told how many times.
Well, we bid it that way, we bid it with interlocking.
I know, we bid it that way, but he didn't construct it. And every time you told him to stop and do it right, he ignored that.
Can we document who this subcontractor is so that when we're looking at proposals, we know that? Because I don't wanna work, we're DMG.
Your contract is with Crossland.
Right.
This is a Crossland problem.
Yes.
Right.
So when we get Crossland on, we can have that conversation, but it is a Crossland.
Crossland allowed the construction to take place, it wasn't the plan, so they wouldn't reach.
Okay, exactly. So Kevin, Kevin can follow up on it for us.
But we'll get, and Chuck as well, Cory, one other question before we move off of Eisenhower and this is on the Crossland report, Crossland's report reports that they're 89% complete. Do you agree that building's 89% complete?
I don't have the latest payout in front of me.
I asked how we paid them.
As far as.
Cory, I'm not asking how we paid, excuse me.
Physically.
I'm talking about, I know we paid for that much, I wanna know, do you agree we've completed that much? Because I walked through this weekend, it looked closer to 70% to me.
Yeah, I mean, each item, each line item, each material, each task is broken down and the aggregate adds up to 85% billings, I think, on the latest payout. You know, that was a few weeks ago, so, their report saying 89% of billings is probably accurate.
But 89% of billing means we paid for work that hasn't been done, once again, I'm assuming my attorney sitting over here would rather be not paid for work that hasn't been done.
Exactly, and also.
No, sir, we don't.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
We don't approve anything that hasn't been completed or that is not stored onsite, material-wise. If it's stored offsite, we go through a rigorous documentation process of it being, you know, invoices being presented, proof of insurance where it is, so if anything were to happen, you know, it's documented that you've already bought it and you own it.
I'm just saying that, so you agree with the, because if you're agreeing with the 89%, that means there really shouldn't be much stress about if we only have 10% more to go, we're 11%, we will meet the deadline and it'll be 100% complete on August 21st.
Or August 10th.
Yeah, and you gotta keep in mind that 89% of billings. Yeah, and you, you got to keep in mind that 89% of billings is not, um, representative of, of the, the final, the final 5% of this project is going to take the time.
He didn't say 80%, 89% of payout. He says 89% complete. Is that, I want to know if that includes the, the, um, parking lot and the demo for Is- the old Eisenhower Middle School also?
No, we haven't paid for those items yet.
Well, this says the project though is 89% complete. I think that's the question I was getting
Right.
from my seat, you know, being my first board meeting, that they're wanting to know, is that building 89%? Because it says it. So are you saying you agree that it is 89% complete or you don't like the word, the use of the word complete?
It is 89% complete per billing. And we've got to keep in mind that that final 10% is like 40, $4 million.
Okay.
So Corey, are we going to be in this building by August 10th or no?
That is what the contractor is telling us. They presented a schedule to show us how it's going to get done and we're going to review that with the owner.
So do we get, okay.
Do we have someone there every day?
We're supposed to, that's, that's the whole point.
Crossland has multiple people on staff.
But evidently not anybody that's,
That's what's disappointing about Crossland. Crossland allowed me to be built against spec because they have five guys on staff every day.
We'll have them on in a minute, you guys can ask them.
Okay, good.
Chuck, you got anything else? I know you've got over there, like to rhyme in here.
I, uh, I, I, I said, when I meant earlier, there seems to be three, uh, parties at, at fault here and we need to, to investigate it before we do anything because, uh, $20,000 being returned has nothing to do with what, with what value that is to the district or what actual damage is, if the district gets separate as a result of.
Does the 89% payout include, he says he hasn't paid for it yet. Does that mean he's holding money to pay the things that aren't completely done?
No, no. No, he said he wasn't.
Just retain it, just retain it.
Retain it, yeah, well, always retain it.
So I'm a guess when you get to that change order, Chuck's going to recommend you approve that change order.
Once, once it gets completely completed.
Okay.
Let's table it.
Yep, um, okay.
He's still got two, three, four to go.
Yes, and we were going to have a question about two, huh? All right. Okay, I guess moving on.
To Whittier?
Whittier. Okay, what's going on with Whittier? Because I've been to Whittier and that's a hot mess over there. You know, what, that drainage problem, is that going to cause that building to leak?
The drainage problem is not going to cause the building to leak, no. But it is going to be an erosion problem until we get it fixed. We'll be meeting with the civil engineer Thursday this week out there to finalize the plan for that. We've looked at it and we've got some, you know, ideas, but I want the engineer to weigh in on this and make sure it's going to work. We'll issue a final plan in, in drawing format and, uh, then we'll have the contractor responsible make those changes.
Okay, I'll be interested in knowing what we're going to do on that because I can't see how we're going to fix that without pouring a lot more concrete.
Well, some of the things we're looking at is taking the downspouts and tying them into an underground drainage system to go directly to the, the detention pond.
French drain.
Um, replacing the gravel with sod, um, pouring some concrete in some areas, um, so it'll be a combination of things.
Yep, yeah, that screenage won't stay. I mean, it's just washed right, right up, it'll wash right out every single time it rains.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll be interested to see what you're coming up with on that one. The civil engineer.
Any other questions on with you? All right, the furniture is still scheduled for delivery on July 20th. Um, the food service warehouse, they've, you know, completed demo over there so that the, uh, the district staff can start reusing some of that area for, uh, dry storage. Um, the freezer installer is repairing the panels that were misaligned and that we, we reported a couple of weeks ago. Um, they're going to replace the skins on, on some of the pan, panels that were damaged in transport. And, uh, the electrician is pulling some wires over there. I believe he finished that up the other day and, um, they've got some piping left, uh, before they turn all of those units.
Question,
With the carriage, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On that, the, the, the stories, do you have a date? We're going to be able to use that? Because I know it was a major deal.
The, the date, the date of substantial completion is mid-July. I don't have the exact day in front of me, I apologize.
Was that always the date, mid-July? Because my understanding is it's got a,
Mid-July.
My understanding it's got a cure for a long time and it's not going to be ready for school to start. Did I misunderstand that?
It's got a 40-day acclimation period. Um, we've started to discuss with the contractor, uh, options for temporary refrigeration and, uh, freezer units if it's not going to be ready to turn on and use, uh, at the date they told us originally.
Okay, and that'll be their cost? Will that be,
It's, it's in discussion with the contractor. We do not have liquidated damages on this project.
We don't have liquidated damage on any project.
Okay. Uh, uh, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep in contact. I appreciate you working on that.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
No.
No.
Okay, with Carriage Hills and Crosby Park, um, you know, documents have been approved by the city, um, and then construction, uh, is just awaiting, uh, Lawton's approval on, on how we're going to do that.
When are we doing, when are we approving that?
Not right now.
So it's just on hold?
Yep.
So it's not going to be done before school?
Okay. Okay.
Next item, MacArthur High School's auditorium and admin HVAC. Uh, ductwork and equipment installation is complete. Um, they're working on the rest of the controls and fire alarm. Um, and the screen wall brick has arrived to the site. They'll be putting that up, uh, here shortly. So those will definitely be ready before school begins. The gym project over there just began and the, um, the demo, um, is well underway. They've gotten a lot of that stuff out of there. Uh, they're working on utility distribution and, uh, they've already set some of the smaller units and they're waiting on, you know, the larger equipment to arrive, uh, in, in the middle of the summer.
So that, that is still going to be done on, that's still going to be done before school though?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
They'll be able to get a majority of the work out of the way before, you know, while they're waiting on the large equipments to arrive, they'll be working on other things.
Excellent, thank you.
Central, Central Middle School, the smittle review is underway. They're working on other small things onsite as well, you know, at, at this project as well. Before the large equipment arrives, they'll get the rest of the invasive work out of the way. So that all they have to do is plug in the big piece of equipment outside. Uh, this is, this is the one, um, that we were talking about last, last month or last board meeting that, um, for the beginning of school, the new air conditioning, you know, will not be up and running. It'll just be working at the existing capacity with the geofield. And then once the equipment is, is installed, it'll, it'll have the new air conditioning capacity. But they'll at least have some level of cooling at the beginning of school, equal to what they have now.
When will that be completed?
The substantial completion on that, I believe, is August 17th. Um, but I'm working from memory there. Uh, I think, I think the, the large piece of equipment will be arriving about that time. So I would expect, um, that to actually be complete the beginning of September.
Did I misunderstand that it wouldn't be completely up to capacity at that time?
No, it won't.
Depending on when the, the large piece of equipment arrives, um, until it arrives, when school's back in session, it'll be running at the capacity of cooling it's got now. It'll have all the piping set up for the new piece of equipment to be plugged in and turned on. And so it'll be a relatively quick process once it gets here. Um, but it's, it's just going to rely on that and I haven't got an exact delivery date on it yet.
Thank you.
With Cameron Stadium, field turf replacement, uh, demolition began, uh, Sunday. Uh, we are still expecting turf to be delivered, to be delivered onsite on Wednesday. And so between now and then, they'll be completing demolition, final grading, the, um, the base, uh, installing a perimeter nailer, a new perimeter nailer and, uh, be ready to start turf install on June 4th.
Okay, so this says demolition and perimeter nailer replacement are complete. Did that, should have that been started?
They are, uh, I think five days behind. They had some rain on their previous project and so instead of the crew showing up, um, the beginning of last week, they showed up Sunday, yesterday.
Okay, so they've just, just not complete though is what I'm asking.
This, this report was written for the board agenda, um, forecasting that, so I apologize.
Yep, yeah, that don't, I don't, that don't make sense.
That's okay. Unless somebody else has a question on that.
Mm-mm. Let's move along. We postpone that.
Lawton High entry, uh, it's been requested that we postpone design on that until further notice.
Now, I will rhyme in, just so the board knows, I've requested we postpone design on everything new until we know what we're doing with the middle school, the freezer and Whittier. We have three projects out there that we've just discussed that we're not sure what's going on until you guys feel comfortable. I don't want us to, we don't need to add more to the plate if that's, and I'm sure Chuck right now is saying good idea, but, uh, so that's, it's, so there shouldn't be anything new going on as far as designs or, or, I don't, I think you're going to get this board to approve any contracts until those three con, those three, they're, they're satisfied with those other three projects? That's what I'm, guess I'm saying?
Yes. Yes.
You're pumping out, we're going to recommend, recommendation to this board until those three. Take it off y'all's back.
It's all right.
Okay, with Douglas Learning Center, we met with the engineer today out there to look at, uh, the existing conditions for air conditioning and to come up with a scope and a proposal for their design services. Um, we'll be presenting that for consideration shortly. Uh, that will include an estimate of what we take, think it's going to take to get the, uh, air conditioning done and, uh, start to forecast how we split up that project to maybe get some of the windows started in the areas that already have air conditioning, uh, and then do a, a separate contract for windows and air conditioning possibly for, you know, the areas that need air conditioning. Um, we're, we're just going to work with the district on that and see what makes the most sense once we have some more information. Any questions about that one?
No.
With MacArthur High Schools, um, Pat Henry, Woodland Hills and the warehouse re-roofs, uh, we met with the contractor and, um, Jack Hanna today, uh, for a pre-construction conference just to discuss staging and, and the logistics over there at those, those four sites. Uh, they will be, uh, working on some middles and getting, getting started very soon. Uh, the Ron Stevens Wall Stadium repair, um, we'd like to, uh, work with the district and probably get a review scheduled for next week. Uh, we've got the drawings in from the civil, the structural engineer on that and, uh, we'll be ready to talk about completion of that, sending it out to bid. The Lawton High School Gym and Auditorium HVAC, um, it's been discussed that the contract for discuss, for construction would be, uh, considered at a later board meeting. And then for the Tomlinson Middle School Gym HVAC, the pre-construction conference was also held today with that contractor. Uh, they have started demolition over there and, uh, things are well underway.
Uh, going back to Pat Henry and, and the gym foyer, I know you said that they're kind of, kind of, look at the logistics of where they're going to start, which, how they're going to start those projects. I want to remind Pat Henry, right? Am I wrong?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of that.
Oh, uh, didn't you say that on those four projects, the gym foyer, MacArthur High School, Pat Henry, Woodland Hills and the food service warehouse, that they were meeting and going to figure out the logistics of how they're going to start each project, right?
Well, we met with the contractor today, you know, talking about where dumpsters are going and what areas need to be fenced off and, and what areas of the drives are being used for, uh, food distribution, things like that.
Oh, okay. I, I thought you'd been through,
But they,
Go ahead.
They have a contract and they're, they have a contract and they're underway.
I just wanted to remind them that Pat Henry leaks so bad that it was leaking through the electrical, I mean, the, uh, the light fixtures and stuff. So if they're going to start one, I wish they'd start that one.
Yeah, I think they're going to be delivering material about the same time for all of them. Uh, you know, we discussed, um, some of the, the order that they would go in and we can, we can review that with them, maybe get some temporary, uh, protection in place, um, in the meantime. That's, that's something we could look into with them.
Okay. I think you had a question, Mary?
Corey, on that Tomlinson Middle School Gym HVAC, does that include the little gym too?
No. No.
No.
No.
No. Okay. All right, thank you, Corey.
All right, well, if there's no further questions, just want to say welcome to Mr. Hime and, um,
Thank you, Corey.
I'll follow up with some of this other information. Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Wow. Can you see that?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Could you hear us?
Um, yes, sir.
So you can answer some of those questions for them?
Yep, um, if it's all right, I'm going to hit some of the high points and then I'm going to kind of go into the schedule and then I'll address some of the questions, concerns, uh, issues that we have and then go into more questions if that's all right.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So right now, um, we are 89% done with the building.
Okay, what, I, we didn't understand that. What'd you say?
We are 89% done with the new building.
With the new building?
The, yep, the parking lot, the abatement, uh, we are doing abatement right now. We're on the second round of abatement on the existing school. Uh, we are finishing up the, or we are performing on the mechanical room. So all we'll have left after this round of abatement will be the restroom. I believe there's about 13 of them and then the auditorium, um, assesses as well. Uh, on the new school, uh, Torazo started. The, uh, if you walk the job, it, I don't, I don't think it pertains or, uh, depicts an accurate representation where we're at. The cafeteria, all been done, painted. We get Torazo, we've got to hang some lights. The music band, it gets, all those TMI walls are exposed, so we're going to paint them. Uh, they're in there painting them right now. So all we have to do is again, hang some lights. A lot of this is just a finish item. Uh, how we've had it phased is the classrooms, the gymnasiums, uh, the kitchen now, admin, cafeteria, uh, the auditorium being lashed. Uh, we're, we're focusing on everything else but auditorium because we have to seal off the auditorium. Um, as the, the manufacturer for the seating, he's still, he would be opening up, he's supposed to be opening up today. I got an email into him to figure out if their manufacturer opened up today. Uh, the plant shut down due to COVID, so kind of addressing that COVID concern. We're tracking the issues with COVID-19 and what items are affected by it. For example, the, what, you know, the seating for the auditorium, uh, with them shutting down, they shut down production back in March. And so they shut their entire warehouse down and haven't made a single chair since then. So as we, we're tracking that so that we can, uh, articulate it to you guys just to say, hey, heads up, we're not going to have this, you know, this scope of work completed. Uh, we've also experienced a couple of delays as far as, uh, you know, manpower dropping up a little bit during the whole epidemic or pandemic, um, as well as material supplies for small items, uh, or plumbers. And HVAC guys had to go to Oklahoma City to get pipe and they had to request a specific time to get pipe and had to turn that request in 10 days in advance. So if they needed pipe, they had to turn the request in and then go get it. So that's kind of the stuff that we're tracking and it's not really, uh, a, a burden to the school, but it's something we track on our end, uh, just in case something bigger were to happen. So for example, if the pandemic were to fire back up again and it gets worse this time and we shut down, we'd be checking those costs as well. Uh, just to say, you know, this is, without them to push out the job, this is kind of, you know, where we're at. So the, uh, right now, I know we're pouring the, we stand some concrete in the courtyard and we are fine grading, uh, and again, we, I wrote this a week ago. Uh, we are getting the entire east side ready for landscaping and irrigation. And then the east side is just about wrapped up. Um, and speaking with our guys today, we're actually going to be pulling some of the tent fencing back, uh, as we get this area to completed, as we finish the building. Uh, sidewalks, we're done with the east side, done with the north side, we're wrapping around to the, the west side of the building, uh, with the concrete floors. Then, the west side ran into some, some dirt issues with the soil being unsuitable, uh, couldn't compact, so we got a fix from the geotechnical engineer, uh, got that fixed, and we kinda executed on it, and, uh, getting it compacted so we continue with that parking lot. So we're, we're, we are in the process of placing the west parking lot right now. On July 1st, the, uh, asphalt pavement will come back, it'll, it'll top coat everything on the east side and the southwest loop drive, and then, uh, do the base cores, or base coat on the west side for the parking lot. And that's probably as far west we can go before, uh, getting into the foundations of the gymnasium up there right now. The, uh, as far as interiors, the, uh, on the schedule, you'll see on the notes I created, right now, we are on track to, we're gonna punch the building on June 16th with, with AIP. We have conducted two preliminary punch lists, or of our own, uh, and started already working to get those items corrected. That way, when we do walk it with Cory, it's very minimal issues, I mean, minimal items. The, uh, gym and locker rooms, we're gonna, we're scheduled right now for July 8th, but that's probably gonna shift to the left a little bit, because we're actually making some good progress on, on those areas. Uh, Cory mentioned the, the furniture delivery. I actually got an email today, I don't know if Cory was a part of it, I hope so, but right now, they're looking to shift the classroom, uh, furniture July 13th and start installing it on the 13th, and then, uh, the remaining furniture will be on, on July 20th, as originally planned. So right now, we're still on track, uh, to have the building completed by August 3rd, excluding auditorium, and we'll continue with auditorium. Uh, when we finish on August 3rd, the only thing really in there will be some of the finish items that have to go in after the seating's in place, such as flooring, uh, things of that. We don't wanna damage, for example, we'll be using for the, the, the chairs, we'll be using the overhead door on the back northeast corner of the gymna, of the, uh, auditorium, so that stage, we don't wanna put that stage in because it's wood flooring. So we're gonna hold off on that wood flooring for that stage until we get the seating in place and then put that wood flooring down, so we don't, don't, uh, damage anything. That's, uh, our goal is to minimize any type of rework. Um, some of the upcoming, again, the, the saw, landscaping, um, and then office, uh, I know the electricians are in there finishing up their, uh, electrical requirements, and we'll be, we'll rocking, we'll be placing sheet rock in the, uh, admin June 8th, and they need about a week to do that, and then the painters will do that a week, and then we'll be, we'll be done, we'll be tracking with the auditorium, I'm sorry, auditorium, the admin, uh, about middle of July. So that's kinda where we're at in a nutshell. Um, again, teachers move in, uh, I believe the teachers come back from summer vacation on August 10th. Uh, right now, we're on track for them to move in on that day, uh, potentially a week earlier. Um, August 3rd is what we're on track to have the building completed. The, uh, I'm working with, uh, I reached out to AJ as far as getting him into the building early to start running all his low voltage requirements for IT, as well as if he needs to get on that scaffolding, that's in the auditorium right now, it's up high, uh, we have it there, so potentially you don't have to rent, you don't have to rent lifts or anything, it's there to use for the school if they need to. Uh, I know Digi's already been in there, we've been working with Digi, uh, on numerous occasions to run all the wires and everything they need for security and access control. Um, so some of the, I'll, uh, address some of the issues. Uh, on the inner, for example, on the, the interlocking walls, we, uh, initially, when the gymnasiums went up, that colored block was gonna be a, a monstrous delay, and, and you can't ninety the block with that colored block, it just wouldn't look good. So we had reached out to Cory and AIP and asked for a, a, you know, an allowance or, uh, permission to not do the corners in the gymnasiums with interlocking block due to the-
Uh, so, are you telling me that, that the architect, um, okayed a design change?
It was, uh, for the, for that, because there's no structural issues, it was more like-
No, 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 I didn't ask if it was a structural issue. I asked you if they okayed a design change.
For the gymnasiums themselves, for the four walls of each gym.
Wow, that, that can't do-
Without your approval.
Huh? Say that again?
I said without your approval.
Without our approval, because we didn't know anything about that. We didn't okay a structural change.
It wasn't a structural change.
I mean, uh, uh, interlock, the change to the walls.
It's a, it's, it's an aesthetic change.
Can, can we get a copy of your documentation on that?
Here, yes ma'am.
Okay.
I'll have to go back to some of the owner architect meetings. I mean, it was discussed with, uh, the superintendent and Sodexo's representatives present.
Okay, but still, that's still not the board. The board, uh-uh, and that's, yeah, and that's not what we talked about, so it's kind of, I, I'm feeling a little bit nervous right now, because I feel like we're doing a lot of double talking, and I really, it's making me nervous.
Uh, remember when I gave my presentation and said that the gyms, the gyms we talked about allowing them to keep it without tearing it down so they could start hanging steel in the air, and told them the rest of it had to be interlocked?
So the, what you're saying is you approved the design change after they did it, or before they did it?
It was after.
Oh, so we're-
It was after.
Okay, well, that's a different, I mean, I understand, you know-
Yeah, we had done-
Yeah, it was like, will we tear it down and start over, or do we do it? I, yeah, I still, like I said, that was before my time, so I'm gonna stay out of this one.
The, so, uh-
Till Chuck gets involved.
With the, with this, the CMU walls and the gymnasiums-
I love this.
We had, you know, the, the masons installed the walls per industry standard, not necessarily per the specs on that one item for interlocking walls. Um, we addressed it, and then it became an issue as far as schedule, and with them, they already had the east and the west walls put, placed, and none of it was interlocked at the time, because we didn't have the north wall or the south wall blocked at the time. North wall being all the colored block. So we, at, at that time is when we reached out to AIP and said, hey, we got it where it's at right now, can we get a, a group, you know, an al, uh, permission to change those two items? Um, and we, and Cory mentioned, we had addressed it with the superintendent, uh, at the time, and definitely not with the board, but the rest of the buildings were supposed to be. So of the interlocking block, the restrooms on the, the only, let me backtrack, the only thing that's not interlocked is the gyms, the music band area on the first floor, that's it. The, and I'm sorry, I apologize, the, uh, weight room and wrestling room on the south side.
So gyms, music band, and weight room?
Say that again, sir?
You said gyms, music band, and weight rooms?
Yes.
Okay.
The kitchen-
So all the rest are interlocking walls as planned?
Yes, the kitchen is interlocking as planned, auditorium and the restrooms that are in the classroom were interlocking. We, we addressed it, as, as Cory mentioned, we addressed it with the subcontractor, we identified it, um, with him as well, to identify the issues, and he, you know, they, they keep progressing, and they had a guy, you know, not to give excuse, but they do have a guy that has, more or less goes back and kinda gets things fixed for, for the standard. So he was working on that, and then they more or less, and we quit paying him for the, for the work, and then they, uh, we got the, and we talked to Cory about it, and he's like, yeah, we gotta definitely give the school, you know, if the school didn't pay for it, uh, we definitely gotta give that money back to the school. And that is what our intent was, and since those two areas, I'm sorry, those four areas were not interlocking, we wanted to make sure, you know, we're transparent, show the school exactly that this is the money that we figured and determined, and it matched, it was actually a little more than what we had kinda estimated, um, to give back to the school, and, uh-
But you didn't give it back to the school because you didn't take it out of GMAX?
Right.
You just put it back into contingency, which could still go to zero per other changes we may have between now and then.
Right.
Correct, correct. And then, kind of like Cory was mentioning, we can, we do the, the contingency to cover any design changes, any, um, you know, for example, the possibility of changing the new, the bus layout, uh, with the new road, uh, changing up some of the work that's already put in place. You know, some of that is what, we give the money back to the school, and we use it for those changes that the art, that the school has requested.
It, it's just, it's concerning to me because I, I really felt like we, this was supposed to be, like we said before, a complete transparency. We, that's why we had y'all come every single, I fought for that, for y'all, you and the architect, to come to every single board meeting and give us an update every single time. They, I mean, our, the superintendent at the time would really thought maybe that was too much, maybe we should do later, and I said, no, we wanna keep on top of this, so everybody knows. And now I feel like we kinda got blindsided.
And then I, we meant no, um, blindsiding, did not intend for that at all. Um, as, as kind of Cory had mentioned, we, with the, with the change, you know, there's no structural issues with that at all. It's more aesthetics as far as the joint against walls. Um, it, you know, if there's a, if there's a board thing, it's probably should've gone through the board. Um, but we're trying to, you know, rectify, so, as far as showing, hey, you know, we didn't, they didn't do this, or this is the money for it.
So twenty-five thousand dollars and a forty million dollar contract's rectifying it?
Yeah.
It was just the exterior, it's just the corners that this pertains to. It doesn't pertain for the entire CMU wall everywhere, it's just the corners on the CMU walls.
I, I don't, I don't-
Yes ma'am.
All right, two quick questions. Is that contractor, that subcontractor still on site doing work, or are they done?
No, they are not. Well, they're on site right now, uh, fixing miscellaneous items. Uh, they are not done. They have the monument wall to put up, which is very minimal, but they're there, you know, uh, fixing stone that gets damaged by the lightning or electrician or different other scopes that run into the, uh, the block wall or the block stone at the bottom, the outside, for example. But they have a crew on site working right now. Um, we have essentially helped hammer on them until they're done. And it's, and then the, you know, the intent is, you know, it's satisfied, the school's satisfied with, with the product that they got.
Right, you're just, like-
I, I don't mean to say, I don't mean to say that derogatory or negative by any means. I just mean, you know, with what we have in place, um, we're constantly going through, and we have our quality control guys come down from corporate, once, once every two, every three weeks, they kinda come down and check different things as far as, you know, bed joints, head joints, uh, block layout, CMU layout, things like that to make sure it's, um, and they look at more towards industry standards, because they're, they look at a, like, quality control as a company, and they, and he's the one that comes down and does that kinda thing.
Well, and I know, you know, again, with, uh, with, you know, our, our town having voted down, you know, a bunch of school bonds for a long time, and then choosing to trust the district and make this investment was a really big deal, especially after knowing that some things went wrong with Freedom and other projects, and so that's why, I realize it may not be a big deal to them, and, you know, they're just doing things as, as planned, but it is a big deal to us, and just as a business owner, I would wanna know, so it might be good to have the owner of that company watch this video and, and make sure they understand how disappointed we are, because that is, is, is big or small of an issue is, I, I, it's, it's just disappointing to have the plans not followed. Um, so, a, and then my other question is, are there any other things like this that even like just cosmetic things or whatever that have deviated from the plan at all, just so we can be prepared?
Were you under the impression we weren't putting in, uh, metal detectors? Because I was just told that we, that they were not planning on metal detectors, and, and of course, that was never approved by the board.
I actually asked, um, when we were on site the first time, I asked about metal detectors and-
They've updated to them though. Rick got them moved.
They need to go.
Yeah, Rick got those added, but at one point they're-
I was surprised by that, Carly, because I figured if we build a state-of-the-art building, we should have metal detectors built into it, but-
Well, they need to move them to different locations.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I was told that, but yeah, I wasn't sure. But is there anything else like this that we should be aware of, or?
Uh, not, I mean, up, upcoming, no ma'am, uh-
So any old things? Because the survey and, like Whittier and, somebody said it was set at a different height and-
So, yeah, so as far as the survey, when we first started construction, the survey was full of the benchmark and set the benchmark, the whole building was about five inches too tall, or the whole site about five inches too tall. We worked through that, uh, minor issue at the very beginning of the job, and we were able to adjust the grades and adjust the slope on some of the concrete and some of the tie-ins for utilities. Uh, not, not changing anything else as far as the building itself, parking lot, it had a little more, on like, it had a little more, uh, slope to it in certain areas, or it mostly the sawdust area, so it was real minor.
And you're talking about it Eisenhower or Whittier's?
Yeah, I'm confused.
Eisenhower, I'm sorry.
So Eisenhower is off five inches, and Whittier's off how far?
Uh, Whittier, uh, the building itself is in the correct spot. The contractor doing the dirt work, he, he put the, with the detention ponds out, he put it about fourteen inches too low. Uh, and it was supposed to be further out and have a, a, the detention pond kind of, uh, consolidated, and he kinda spread it out a little bit and, uh, to, sorry, to make it, uh, to make it, not make it work, but to, you know, make it, get the building put in. Um, with, with the fourteen inches, we kinda addressed it, um, with the architect and said, hey, we, we're, we're low, and we had to put a step on the backside of the safe room, we had to put some handrails to get it ADA compliant. Um, and then the portables they're put in, and then we put in sidewalks around them, uh, for the design to get it. So, to, to, to fix it, yes, we, we will be taking care of the repairs to fix the erosion control, uh, putting the water, oh, sorry, the water, the, the storm, we're gonna tie it to the, right now with the civil, we're working with civil and AIP to put all that underground, so it's gonna be tied to, uh, like, I think it's over at Hughish we have that, where it's tied underground and runs away from the building over to detention pond. It, it, and, and it may not be Hughish, but I know it's one of the safe rooms, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we ran it and piped it underground a little way, and then over to detention pond, and so kinda the idea is we'll run for the head wall, put a triple channel over in the detention pond, and then help push it off, uh, into the, you know, city's storm control.
So you really feel like you could get that corrected, because right now, it, it's, it's really concerning.
Yes ma'am. So, the, the, the screenings, um, you know, we, we, we put those in per the, per the design, uh, we compacted them, we didn't know the erosion was gonna occur like it did. Um, some, sadly, sometimes it takes, uh, a mishap to learn your lesson. So on, like, on this one, you know, it's, we're definitely gonna get it fixed, we're gonna take care of it and make it right, uh, for the school.
So on the step and the rail and those things, the fourteen inches, did we pay for that out of contingency, or?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, the contractor covered those changes because they didn't put the dirt there to begin with, and there, there was another set of concrete, uh, plumes, uh, to protect from erosion between a sidewalk and a, uh, air conditioning, uh, condenser outside, uh, that was in the works when, when you last saw the project. You know, those, those changes they were responsible for because they deviated from the plan. Um-
So they didn't come out of, they didn't come out of contingency or the Lawton School money?
No.
No.
Okay.
Nope, and then, and then, ma'am, the repairs for that stormwater and that erosion control, uh, were those, like, for example, those two roof drains on the east side, I'm sorry, the northeast side of the building, at the angle, the real, or three of them, where it's real bad. You know, we'll be piping directly from that to underground, as, as we're talking right now, pipe it directly underground over to detention pond and then off the site, so it will not be able to erode. Uh, and we've also talked about pulling up those screenings and putting sawd down as well. Sawd is a good, uh, course for, uh, you know, for runoff and helps control the flow of water as well.
So my last question is, and I'm sure somebody else will have one, but, so you're saying the middle school at Eisenhower is off five inches?
Yes, sir. It's five inches high.
So did you have, I mean, I, I guess, did the board, was that a change, or did we just agree that five inches wouldn't hurt anything?
We reached out, um, you know, to, to the architect with, with the issue, uh, and said, hey, this is the benchmark, the architect, the, and the surveyor, um, made a mistake pulling from the wrong benchmark, um, and he pulled from one off a fifty-second and leave instead of the one that was in front of the job. And so in doing so, when you travel about a mile and a half, you do get dropped on your GPS equipment, and that's what, that's what happened.
And the civil engineer reviewed that, uh, proposed solution, and, you know, basically said, you know, if there's no cost change to the district, that, uh, he believes that the grading would be fine, they could, they could massage the grades around the perimeter and make a tie-in. Um-
Yes.
But the contractor did not save any money setting the building too high. I think, uh, you know, that was another thing we looked at, is there a cost change? Um, and we decided there was not. Um, but at, at that moment, most of the foundations were set, you know, the lower five inches, we would've been putting the project way behind by tearing out all those, those footing.
It, it, it's so much that, that we keep talking about, because, I mean, you want us to look at the big picture and say, well, we would've went ahead and said, go ahead, because we want the project to stay on track, but the fact is, we weren't given the, given the opportunity, and that, that's what's really kinda frustrating right now, is all of these things are going on, and yet y'all are coming to board meetings and letting us just think that everything's, you know, roses and, and, um, daisies, you know, so this is, now we're coming down.
I apologize for, for that. Um, you know, I, I definitely understand how you feel. Uh, these, these changes were discussed with the direct project team for the district, and, you know, if we found them to be inconsequential, um, you know, that, that was, they weren't asked, we weren't asked to, to talk about it in front of the board.
Okay, okay, we're gonna go back on this, you're talking about Sodexo, because Sodexo would never had any, any authority on Eisenhower Middle School, and that's actually in the contract. They were not to, and they, they did not want to have anything to do with this, you know, that's, and they were not on hand. Yes.
Are you talking about Sodexo, Cory?
I'd have to review the meeting minutes to see who was present during these specific meetings.
Yeah, you probably better share those, so-
We had, we had district employees there as well.
So you probably oughta share those, so I can- So you probably ought to share those so I can share them with the board so they get a better sense of, uh, yeah, who approved this and, and how it got where, again, you know, from, from, from my standpoint and, and again, I haven't been with this board very long, but transparency is very paramount to them.
Very.
And I, I don't, I don't think they're as upset about mistakes being made or, or, or being off if, if it's fixed as they are about being put in the dark and not hearing these things in, 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 in having to start asking questions. So, uh, yeah, let us know so we can at least find out who was on that from the district that didn't pass that along or it got to the board. So I'd appreciate if you'd share that back with us, those notes of the five inches. And I guess the, the one at Whittier where they reset the buildings wrong, was that brought before the board?
No.
The, the building, we did know that the portables were going to be raised up. We did know that because, and I know that that's because, well, because of the water could run underneath it, but.
No, they were raised up because they missed the survey, not because.
Oh, well, it needed to be raised up because of the rain, because of the rain that's going to go underneath it.
All right.
I'm sure I understand, we're talking about Eisenhower and the survey, we're talking about the physical, the building itself is set five inches higher than it was supposed to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, because they took, the surveyor took the survey a mile and a half away instead of on the site?
Wrong corner.
Yes, ma'am. There's a benchmark.
They suffered a benchmark.
There's a benchmark in the middle of, of Gore Boulevard and right in front of the job site. And there, and so the architect, I'm sorry, the surveyor, um, he didn't know about that one per se and went to the one he knew about, which is on Fifty Second and Lee. And that's where he came and pulled and he set the bench, what we, we paid him to do about his interim boards. He, he's the one who sets the benchmark for everybody else to pull off of. So like my concrete guys, whenever we do our layout, it's based on his, his, uh, benchmark that he places as a surveyor. But yes, he placed the survey and he was, he was five inches high. So the whole building itself is five inches high. And like Corey said, we were able, we caught it as the foundations were finishing and we poured a couple slabs, um, when we caught it and we were able to fix any issues as far as tying into utilities and roads.
Okay, and we know Eisenhower High School sits down lower, so is it, did the civil engineer put in any type of, uh, uh, concession or how is that going to work with, with, uh?
Runoff?
Yes, runoff.
We've got, we've got, we've got underground drainage for our new site. It's all being piped to the south through our detention structures and then into the city storm sewers.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, thank you, that's awesome.
We're not.
Thank you.
We're not draining on Eisenhower.
That's normal drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think you guys have, I mean, obviously I imagine you have some few more, few more questions. I think I addressed a lot of the questions over from the beginning.
The only, only other thing I have to say is you're saying the building's eighty-nine percent complete and the architect is saying it's eighty-nine percent complete in pay.
Yes, ma'am. Now, we, we just submitted, we just submitted building for as of May twentieth first or May twenty-eighth, whatever, I can't remember the day, I'll have to pay out. As of that day, yes, ma'am.
But you're saying the building is eighty-nine percent complete right now? The building itself? Okay.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ma'am.
Building.
Any other questions?
You saying billing, are you saying billing or building?
The building is eighty-nine percent complete.
Building, he's saying building, yeah, not building. Well, we, it's kind of hard to hear, it's a little bit muffled.
Yeah, I, I apologize.
Two different people are hearing two different things, so, all right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so, thank you very much.
I want to, I want to apologize for not, you know, kind of bringing these, all these issues to you guys, uh, when they came up. Again, like Corey mentioned, we bring them up in the owners' meetings and, and we were addressed and we, we bring them up and they're mentioned and we discuss them in the owners' meetings with the representatives that are there. Um, so I do apologize that they were not, you know, brought to you guys' attention right away. And, uh, you know, moving forward, I'll make sure that every one of you know of any issues that come up on this job.
Yeah, we.
Very transparent.
I mean, we.
We definitely want to.
Yeah, definitely, and if we can get some copies of some of the, the, uh.
Minutes.
Yeah, the emails, I have the men, the emails and stuff.
The minutes of their meeting.
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with what, what, what Mr. Heim said, it's, you know, we understand things happen, whatever, but we just need to know and, and so that we can be transparent with the community that trusted us to do this the right way and all of that.
Be good stewards of the money.
Right.
The whole thing. All right, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Phew. I'm, it just, all I can think about is that roughing me that we had, oh, anyway. I'm sorry, we, we could say three hundred fifty thousand dollars by going with the work that was just as good as the other one. And they, and they said we had to say the design and blah, 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 and they wouldn't cover it. And now we find out that we just changed things a little bit along the way. But that money was because they wanted to keep the extra money. Sorry, shouldn't have spoke out of time.
Number six. Any questions on the departmental reports?
No.
Port of the superintendent, good news. We want some good news.
Oh, good.
I got a note today from two LPS graduates received and accepted congressional nominations to the United States Military Academies from Congressman Tom Cole. Congratulations to Eisenhower High School graduate Joseph Kelly, who will be attending the United States Military Academy at West Point, New York. And MacArthur High School graduate Sidney Gunner, who will be attending the U.S. Air Force Academy at Colorado Springs, Colorado. That's what we want, it's good news. Continuing with my report a little bit, it says on here about the COVID. One thing people keep asking, and, and I want to make it clear, we discuss in this building often, what are we going to do about reentry? Those questions come up, but I do want people to stop and think, and I didn't put an exact calendar to it, but it's about eighty days since spring break, the Friday before spring break. So eighty days ago, we were in school or just a day out to, and we don't start school for another eighty days. So it's really, when you think about how much has happened the last eighty days to put together a lot of plans for the next eighty days, it is, you know, from eighty days from now. We are discussing multiple ways to make sure we can, we can get back. You know, we're hoping it continues as it has the last month, you know, we're, we're in stage three and, and, and we know we need our kids in school. We need, we know we need them face to face. As you well know, we're expanding a lot in virtual. Uh, we definitely are going to come up with some game plans for parents who don't feel comfortable with their kids back in school and, and, and things like that to try to make that work the best we can and be very flexible. So that is, you know, to relieve everybody, we are thinking about it, we are talking about it right now. If somebody asks, we are going to stay with the calendar we have approved. You have other people, I mean, somebody brought up Saturday school, I'm not sure, the state superintendent put it.
The state superintendent.
And I'm not sure why that, I mean, again, that may be something we could talk about in August doing it too, because they were going to do it Monday, Wednesday, Friday and a Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, so you could have half the kids in school. There's different things we could do and again, those are conversations we could have in August if we still feel we need to have those. You know, right now, we're all going to knock on wood and hope we continue with the route we're going and, uh, things are back to normal in, in August and, and we're ready to go.
I think it's really good for the community to, even when there's not necessarily an update, just to hear from us every few weeks that, hey, we're still on track, we're still planning for this and just to, while the.
And Lynn's going to try to get something released in the next day or so, just to make sure. We talked about it today and, and, and her and our, you know, getting something out and keeping our web updated that, because I understand people hear it and you hear all these things about, you can teach driver's ed, but you need to roll the windows down. You can, we, if we put them on buses, we need to keep the windows down. I mean, you, the things you hear out there are, are crazy. And I know Lynn's having a town hall of some kind tomorrow and, uh, so there's some things there that, uh, the other thing we're doing as a district with the leadership and the change, uh, and we are looking at everything and looking for resource, search, support, whether it's working or not. And we're not trying to change things and, and one thing Dr. and James and I talk about it a lot because we're both new to the district is unless it positively affects kids or it's negatively affecting kids, we're not looking to change anything. I mean, those are things you change a year from now. There's things you see, well, why do we do them this way? Well, you know, and you guys have heard me talk, there's a lot of ways to do things and more than one way can be right. So, uh, but we are, you know, the transfer policy, we're really looking hard at that and we're going to come up with a plan for our military. You know, there's enough stress there without them worried about what school they're going to. So we're going to try to make it where, uh, we think we have room, numbers could get to be where if they live off base, they can still go to Freedom Elementary. That shouldn't be a problem for them and different things that make them work. We're in talks about that, you'll start hearing some, because you, you know how once you start talking about it, it gets out and once it gets out, but we are in talks, we haven't really come up with anything solid. But one thing we, you know, we want, we want to be positive, we want people to go to schools they, they are excited to go to. And we know it's a twofold deal. First, we got to open up sites for people to go to, open up more pre-K space for kids to get in with it. But second, we've got to sell our schools and make sure everybody knows things like this. We have two kids, you know, who else in Oklahoma had two kids appointed to a military academy? Uh, you know, last week, that video on the May nineteenth of all the thirty-plus ACTs and, I mean, that's incredible. And things like that, we got, you know, there were, I think fifteen from MacArthur over a thirty or something like that. I can't imagine how many high schools had that percentage of their kids score over a thirty on the ACT. I mean, we have got to make sure people know how great Lottin Public Schools are. All three high schools do a great job, all of our elementaries do a great job. And so we got to make, you know, it's easy to say, we're not going to let people do this, we're not, we got to make it where Lottin Schools are the school people choose. And, you know, and that's where we're working with the virtual academy. How do we, how do we offer that to kids where they have other choices and they can still be in band or they could still take an art class or they could still play basketball or such and, and be part of a virtual because that best fits them. And one thing this COVID has done for us is, uh, we've learned that we've got to be adaptable.
Right.
And, you know, working at home, you know, there's a lot of people feel like they do, they get more work done at home than they did in the office. Uh, I'm glad to get back to work just because people that are around me know I'm kind of a people person and I like to be around people and probably all the people up here are wishing I'd go back home because of them. But anyway, we're very excited, as you know, that you, uh, we're doing a lot of things and organizing. I know we had meetings in this building all day with teams coming in and meeting and, and we kind of brought back one thing we did in the district is we're pretty well taking Fridays off, working four-ten type schedule. Uh, that gives this building more time for somebody to clean it on Fridays or Thursday evening. It keeps the, the mowers and the, and gives them an extra three-day weekend. So we're looking at that to kind of adapt as we move forward.
Longer in the summer?
Just for the summer.
Just for the summer. Yeah, no, we're not looking at it when school starts. No, we're going to have our kids, I'm a five-day-a-week, I, I want kids in school every day. So, uh, any other, any questions you guys have of me? I haven't been here that long to have a lot of a report, but I got to give great news and you always love that, any, uh.
Well, Mr. Heim and, and, and Dr. James, I just want, you're going to find out and you've probably met a lot of them. We have a ma, we have amazing, um, our teachers, our administrators, everything are amazing here. They, I mean, they really are top-notch and you're going to, if you haven't met them all, you're going to continue to.
Call me impressed, I've been impressed with all the people I've had dealings with. I, I am, I've, it's been awesome and, and again, I, I think, uh, you will find that one thing we do and, and we've had that discussion and Lynn and her team's already working on it, is we're going to sell what we do. People will know and people will know Lottin and, you know, you'll hear stories, but I take Lottin Public Schools serious and, and, and I'm excited about the things we're going to make happen. And, uh, and it's not, you know, I always say it's the people around me that make me look great. So the things that, those same people you're talking about, we're going to start telling stories about what they do. So they get the recognition they deserve because we've got a lot of people doing great things in this district.
Definitely, we really, really do.
Rick Owens's team all got Twitter accounts today. And started tweeting out some of the follow things going on in the educational services.
Awesome.
Oh, wow. I don't have Twitter account, I need to.
Start following Twitter.
Yeah, I love sharing everything, I mean, you'd see all this. Oh, he's amazing, he is amazing. It's so quiet and understated, you know, he just kind of.
I mean, his whole team was, his whole team was tweeting out today, so a hashtag, uh, Lottin PS and we are Lottin. They're starting to put out stuff every ten minutes.
Lottin PS.
Hashtag Lottin PS.
Any other, uh, questions on, from the superintendent? Moving to item number eight, the consent agenda, I assume you want to approve it, but you do want to pull out?
We need to pull.
Item.
I think it's eight.
Eight G one A.
There it is. Yep.
Go ahead, somebody, you're, that's back to you, Corey.
We need to, go ahead, um.
Move to, okay. Go ahead, I'll make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda except item eight G one.
A.
Eight G one A, sorry.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywork?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
And I guess you'd like to move the table, that eight G one A.
Yes.
Okay, move the table.
Hold on a second.
Uh, second.
Hold on a minute.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Claude Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Nywork?
Yes.
Ms. Edwards?
Yes.
I didn't, number nine?
No executive?
No.
No, we don't have a need for an executive session? Okay, perfect.
So we'd be two.
Need to approve the support and personnel report.
Thirteen.
Anybody get, would somebody want to?
Motion to approve item thirteen?[1742.11]